Oh, no. You're fine. No, you're good.
Well, it's gonna be a while.
Yeah, I kept waiting down the street. Yeah, I just thought I should have like go in and do that. Yeah. Oh, no. You're fine. No, you're good.
Well, it's gonna be a while.
They're on a training trip down. And she worked a lot, so. And she worked a lot, so. Yeah. But we did a couple of things together, which was nice. How were your holidays? Yeah. You're gonna do a whole lot, but yeah. That's fine. I know, yeah. Don't participate in something all works.
I can have everybody find a seat. We'll begin the meeting.
This is gonna clear out real quick.
How the gavel?
We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024. I would ask those of you who are seated to please rise. We're gonna have a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we begin the year 2024, the Batavia community feels blessed for the many fine people and the many nice occurrences that have happened in our town. And tonight, we are especially appreciative of the public safety personnel that we have working for us, protecting us, and knowing in the fact that their business in our community continues to get bigger and better, and they handle it in every way they know how in the very best of fashions. In the case of the Fire Department, this past year, they responded to 5,083 calls, many of those being ambulance and first aid, but they were very, very busy. The same was true with our Police Department. They responded to thousands of calls and activities, and both units have worked very, very closely together to ensure that Batavia is always very well protected and something that we hold as a great community pride. Also, tonight, we want to remember those from our community and country who are serving in defense of the liberties of the United States of America on foreign soil, and we just ask for a special blessing to be showered on each of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. And finally, tonight, we just ask for a continued blessing on our community going forth into the new year, knowing that we have a good city council here and that all are here to do what is in the very best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Malay, would you listen to the pledge, please?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Janzett?
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer. Twelve present, two absent, Your Honor.
So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business, and we do have Alderman Wolf on Zoom. And is anybody else on Zoom or yes, sir?
Just Wolf.
Okay. All right, then, item four is a reminder from the chair that if you're going to speak to us tonight, we ask that you come forward and use the podium, which is on the, has a microphone on it, and as you know, our meetings are being recorded for revision on television, so we want to make sure that we got everybody heard as the TV cameras will be recording you. Moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Chair sees nothing. Very good. Moving then to item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Alderman Chan, or you?
I have that, Your Honor.
Alderman Er.
Consent Agenda reads as follows. Approvals: December 12, 2023, payroll of $993,166. Accounts payable check register of $2,470,446.47. City Council minutes: December 18, 2023. And ordinance 2024-001: Appointing FOIA officers. I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Er, second by Alderman Malay for the approval of the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved.
Malay, I'm sorry.
All right. All right. Alderman Er, Alderman, items number seven is matters from the public for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us? Doesn't look like it. All right, we're gonna move then to recognition, and Chief Hanson's moving into place, and before he gets there, I just want to make a couple of comments about Lieutenant Schmidt. As most in this room know, you know, I've been kind of with the Fire Department since my very early days as a citizen of this town, and I served on the Batavia Fire Department as a paid-on-call member, starting when I was in college, and I stayed on till the day I got elected mayor and got sworn in, and then they wouldn't let me be a paid-on-call fireman anymore because I was the chief's commander-in-chief, so they put me on leave of absence. So I've been on the leave of absence from the Batavia Fire Department since April, or no, May 3rd of 1981. And I think I'm the longest leave of absence member they'll ever have in history, and I probably, obviously, will never go back, but many years ago, Chief Hodge decided that I could have some good function, and that was, he wanted to make me the department photographer. So as a result of that, I carry the pager, I sleep with it at my house, and I do everything, so everything the Fire Department knows and does, I'm aware of it, and if it's something good, I'll get out of bed and come with him. And I just want to say, in watching our retiree here tonight, over the last years in his role as a fireman and later as an officer, he's been an extraordinarily good guy to do the work. And I know he enjoys the respect of the men and the community, and I think we should say that we're very sorry to lose him, but we wish him his very best in his retirement and as he moves forward. Good people aren't always round, but he's one of the better ones, and so I just wanted to share that officially on behalf of the mayor and city council. And Chief, I'll turn this over to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And part of it, you know, we appreciate Steve's service, and obviously, we feel, as you do, very proud of the Batavia Fire Department and the members who've served, and we put together a little recruiting video that we're gonna debut today, in part to kind of give Steve an idea of what he's missing, what he's leaving. So we'll play that a little bit, maybe give him a little bit of guilt, but I know he has done, he wants to retire, he's earned it and he deserves it, so.
I didn't set out to be a firefighter. It actually evolved through an interest to help others and the community.
My dad was a Wheaton firefighter when I was a little kid. He would have a call that he'd have to go back for, so me and my sister would get dressed in the middle of the night and go hop in the truck and spend our night at the fire station.
I always loved seeing the fire trucks fly down the street. It just gives you goosebumps, seeing a fire truck go down with the lights and sirens.
For me, it's like being an athlete. Every day's different, it's challenging, so that's why I got into the fire service.
I really liked Batavia because they had a lot of family dwellings, but then it also had industrial, it had business, it kind of encapsulated everything.
We provide opportunities you can't just get in other departments. One of the perks of being a firefighter in Batavia is our training and development program. So we provide that leadership training, we provide that hands-on fire training, we provide the fire protection training, the community risk reduction training.
We take our training very serious. We have a lot of opportunity for advancement to build yourself as a good professional.
I think we do a really good job of allowing our members to go to the next level, to the next class, preparing each person to go from the firefighter rank to the lieutenant rank to the battalion chief rank.
I've been able to become an OIC, which is an officer in charge, so if a lieutenant's off, I'll step into the role of acting as the officer for that crew.
And we get that support from the administration as far as continuing education, making sure our members are prepared, and making sure that they have the certifications that they need to go out and serve the citizens of Batavia.
I'm very fortunate to be the chief of Batavia. It's just that quintessential small-town community.
The community is just super supportive.
Batavia is always great to come out to our events.
Being on the Fire Department and driving through town, everyone's always waiting to you, which is so cool.
This is a good place for somebody that's like brand-new, that would want to come and be challenged and get a start on the fire streets.
It just has that family vibe, kind of from the time you walk in, you just feel very welcome.
One of the primary things we look for in a new recruit or someone who comes to see us is what's in their heart. Do they want to be here? Do they want to serve others? And from that point, we'll help them achieve those goals.
It's a destination department. Everybody here takes a lot of pride in wearing the Batavia name, the Batavia badge.
I like the excitement, I like how it's different every day, but what I really like is the people that I work with. I'm fortunate, I work with a great group of men and women that are here every day, they're dedicated to the citizens of Batavia. They train hard, they prepare for each emergency, they take care of each other, and that really, for me, is what this is all about.
Thank you very much. And in part, that kind of overviews what Steve has committed his time in service to and helping build this department. Lieutenant Steve Schmidt has been with the city of Batavia for just over two decades. He began his life of service to others when he was 17 years old. He joined the military as a Marine. After a four-year tour, he continued his public service with five different agencies. The Grange Park Fire Department with his father. Of course. And you have to stay, Steve. Nice try. All right, sorry for the interruption, right on tone, very good. So he first started working the fire service with his father at the Grange Park Fire Department. He then went on for a little stint of 10 years with the Lamont Police Department, just to make sure fire department was correct for him. Came back to the Glen Allen Fire Department, once he figured out that police service wasn't exactly what he was looking for. And finally, he served with us the best for the last 20 years here at the Batavia Fire Department, which totals almost 40 years of service to others. Steve is leaving us, and we'll be moving out of the area. One of the things he will continue to do is to serve, and just in a different capacity. In his retirement letter, he noted to me that he plans to continue to be part of the American Legion, for which he has been a proud member for over 18 years, and he'll continue to do that for the rest of his life. And we just want him to know that he will continue to be a part of our city of Batavia Fire Department family for the rest of his retired days. Congrats.
Thank you. As is always the case, when we lose a valuable employee who is retiring, we hopefully give you a very nice plaque, and Steve's tonight is just that. Says, "City of Batavia, Stephen Schmidt, Fire Lieutenant, in appreciation of 20 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia and the Batavia Fire Department, September 2nd, 2003 to January 3rd, 2024, and signed by myself as the mayor of Batavia." So I'll present that to you. And again, on behalf of the people of Batavia, I thank you for some really great service, and I could describe some stuff I saw you get into, but we'll just leave it at that. But I mean, seriously, stuff that was dangerous and challenging, and you always had the respect and the command of your men, and I always felt really good when I saw you were at the scene and kind of running things, because I knew we were not gonna go off some crazy way and get ourselves into trouble, so you got a very great career here and one that the Batavia Fire Department will be cherishing forever for your good efforts.
Appreciate it.
And the sirens is for an oven fire, so. You want to make any comments?
Sure, I just made a short little, little speech here. Let me, let me get that out. Actually, I just wanted to, I wanted to thank my family for being with me for all these years, because I know it could be, I know it could be crappy. I'm missing birthdays and holidays and special events. And, you know, all of you, I appreciate every one of you guys. I was gonna make a crummy commercial for the openings that are gonna be happening here at Batavia Fire Department, but the chief usurped me there a little bit. I'll just leave you with this. My son-in-law said it so eloquently. I'm Steve Schmidt, and I ride motorcycles and I shoot guns.
We didn't really acknowledge, but retirees from the city of Batavia get a street sign, so he's moving down to Tennessee, so he's got a nice new address of Smith Co. on the city of Batavia. Show his driveway. Find it in the middle of nowhere. There you go. Thank you very much.
Okay, and item number eight is a second recognition of, or, excuse me, is a swearing in of a new lieutenant, Brian D. Nicola. So Brian, if you would join me up here at the front, make sure I got the right oath of office here.
We're having a little talk about, man, we're gonna come around. Who people like. Okay, a couple of words about Brian here. Brian D. Nicola started with the department as a cadet in 1996. I know he doesn't look it, but he's been here a few years. He was hired as a paid-on-call firefighter on June 16th, 1997. Brian worked as a full-time firefighter for just a little stint in North Aurora until he came to his senses from '07, 2013, when he was hired as a full-time firefighter here in Batavia. He has worked as our fire marshal for a period of time. Brian is a certified firefighter III, paramedic, officer II, fire instructor. He also serves as an instructor for Illinois Fire Service Institute in Champaign. Some of his colleagues have come all the way just to see him get promoted here, and we appreciate that. And he also holds many numerous certifications in other aspects of the fire service, and he continues to work diligently in all aspects and in all organizations within the fire service. We're very proud of Brian, and we're honored to be able to promote him tonight. And as part of that, and as part of our transition service, Steve Schmidt is gonna come up, and we're gonna transfer his badge over to Brian to transfer the torch and Steve's leadership that he's paved the way for you, Brian. Thank you very much.
Why you gotta swear him in?
You gotta swear him in, and I think his, your right?
I'm wearing it.
We're having a little talk about, who's gonna bend his badge. Have we decided? We're nervous.
I want to stick it out.
Perfect. Okay, decision made.
I gotta get all you on camera here, that's the big thing. So if you come right here and face the camera and watch the family stand behind you, and if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye and state your name.
Aye, Brian D. Nicola.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of lieutenant.
To the position of lieutenant.
On January 2nd, 2024.
On January 22nd, 2nd, 2024.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And it will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant.
Of lieutenant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're a board.
Thank you, Mayor. And just as a side note, there's a little reception for Brian over at Pal Joey's after the ceremony or meeting here, and there's also a walkout retirement for Lieutenant Smith tomorrow, Fire Station 1 at 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
Thank you, Chief.
If you're available, please stop by either one of those events. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, that ends the Fire Department's highlights here tonight, and they are highlights. And I'm thinking that a number of you are gonna want to leave right now.
How official?
So why don't you, let's just take a couple minutes of, oh, you want to kind of go out the door, that's fine. Sometimes they start, it takes a lot of noise and... Okay, returning to the agenda, we will move then to item number 10, which is another oath of office, and I've asked Chief Mazza if you would introduce the new candidate. It's not on. Can you give him the?
All right, good evening, council. I'd like to introduce you to Raymond Williamson. He is our newest police officer. Raymond was recently selected by the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commission to fill an existing vacancy within the department. He is originally from the western suburbs of Chicago and a graduate of Yorkville High School. Raymond attended Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville, where he graduated in 2019 with a bachelor's of science degree in exercise science. Officer Williamson is scheduled to begin training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy this coming Monday, January 8th, in Glen Allen. We are excited to have Raymond joining our Police Department, and we believe that his education and his life experience is gonna be a great addition to our team.
So Raymond, you want to join me up here in the circle like the others have had to do, so we can get you on the TV camera. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Raymond Williamson.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On December 18th, 2023.
On December 18th, 2023.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
And then there were three.
Learned a long time ago, you take a couple, few seconds to breathe there while all those people.
They want to get to Pal Joey's, you know.
Environmental investigations.
Okay, we will move then to item number 11, and this is a night of proclamations and recognitions, and this one is a proclamation honoring Chris Low as the 2023 recipient of the Tony Burrows School Board Member of the Year Award. And I know Chris is in, would, Chris, would you join me up here in the front? It says, "Whereas the Illinois State Board of Education has recently proclaimed Chris Low to be the Tony Burrows School Board Member of the Year Award for 2023, and whereas Chris Low, a beacon of leadership and advocacy, has left an indelible mark upon our community. As a trailblazing member of the Batavia School District 101's elected board, Low has been a visionary force, championing diversity, equity, and coalition building. And whereas his unwavering dedication to duty exclusively within our school district is unparalleled, Low's influence extends far beyond the school board. He is co-founder..." He is co-founder of the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative, stands as a testament to his relentless pursuits of diversity, equity, and belonging in our community. Collaborating tirelessly with various organizations, from the Batavia Historical Society to the Batavia City Government, he ensures that our students have the resources needed for their educational triumph. And whereas under Lowe's guidance, the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative has secured grants and organized the Community Conversation Program, addressing pivotable topics like political engagement and bridging achievement gaps. Thus, this transformative leadership was unheard in a new... And heralded in a new era of dialogue, inspiration, and equitable outcomes for our community. And whereas Chris's historical position as the first Black member of the Batavia School District 101 speaks volumes in bodying his commitment to breaking barriers. His impassioned speech during Batavia's inaugural Black History Month celebration, coupled with his collaboration on exhibits showcasing Batavia's Afro-American heritage, exemplifies his dedication in honoring our diverse community. Therefore, it is this proclamation that we honor Chris Lowe's legacy is one of inspiration, change, and relentless pursuits of more inclusiveness in our future. And signed by myself as the mayor. So I'll present this to you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to say that beyond the proclamation, that I've worked with Chris over the years, and he definitely is everything that we said in this proclamation plus more. I know there were many times he did stuff, and he wasn't looking for any credit or any pats on the back or any acknowledgement, but he's been one that's been in the trench and has worked to really kind of bring this Batavia School Board to a new objective of vision and understanding for the community. And so I just want to personally, as the mayor, salute him for his good efforts in helping to make Batavia the nice town that it really has become, one with a very strong educational system, and one which hails people who are successful and encourages others who want to be in many different ways. And work of Chris has done a lot to bring that to the fruition. Would you like to make two words?
I didn't prepare anything, but I can say something briefly. I'm never one to give up the opportunity to speak for others. And I want to just say that I didn't get here by myself. I got here through the community. And by listening to others and what they had to say, helping them navigate the system is how I ended up in the place that I am because I help other people achieve their goals. And so when people came to me with ideas, I helped them get those ideas to fruition. So, speaking as a former elected leader, I look to you, think about who's not in the room. Find those voices, listen to them, advocate for them, empower them. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all of you looking at. Hope to get your thoughts.
Thank you.
Let me introduce you here first.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. We're at item 12, which is the report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. And we're very honored to have the president, CEO here, so you would go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. It's fun to be at a meeting that's so positive and upbeat. The microphone's already warmed up for me. This is kind of nice. First, I want to say thank you, each and every one of you, for supporting our local businesses. The holiday season has just come to a close, and each and every purchase that you made at our local businesses really made a big difference to our town. So we keep that in mind, especially going into the new year. We don't want to lose that momentum. Keep supporting our local businesses. Keep sharing their posts on social media and commenting on their pages because it really, really helps. I want to say that I'm thrilled to report that last year, the Chamber sold $16,530 in Chamber bucks. And the Chamber donated $1,000 of Chamber bucks to Chamber chairs and $5,000 additional Chamber Holiday Bucks. So in total, $22,530 in money was directed right into our local businesses. We sell Chamber bucks all year long, so keep that in mind if you need any gift-giving ideas for anniversaries, birthdays, or other special occasions. Please, like I said, use those to keep our money going to our local businesses and keeping our town thriving. I have here... I'm going to pass out. If you don't mind passing me around. I'm giving out our Chamber calendar that has our important dates on it through the year. As you know, we go on and add new activities throughout the year and new events all year long, but I wanted to get those so that you can add them to your calendar now. If you... I also want to say if you are not receiving our Monday newsletter, please check your spam folder. I know that sometimes it's routed there. And Monday, the Weekly Digest tells you of all of our upcoming events. So please look for that in your email box. Inspire Celebration will be held Thursday, April 25th, at Revelry 675. We're so excited to celebrate Marge and Dave Brown as the 2023 Citizens of the Year and the Batavia RSVP as the Spirit of Batavia Award recipient, in addition to the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization and Flag Day Committee, which are being honored with the Batavia Impact Award. Businesses that have made significant investments and improvements to their facilities in our community will also be honored with our special Ole Awards at Inspire and Celebration. So please join us. That'll be a wonderful event, like I said, Thursday, April 25th. I want to remind everyone that the Chamber is offering Inspire scholarships to high school... To four high school seniors. So if you know anyone that is a senior at BPS, please route them to our website. Each scholarship is worth $1,000. The Chamber is happy to always provide connections and support to BPS to help encourage our future business owners. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this past month. We're delighted to welcome Wolf Transportation, a luxury transportation service; Taco Dolly, the authentic Mexican cuisine that's opening where Smash Burgers was on Fabian and Randall; Zonta Club of St. Charles, Geneva Batavia, is a local not-for-profit run organization working to empower women and girls through service and advocacy. The Chamber supports all these businesses. If you want more information, please go to our website. We are inviting you to Italy. If you want to go to Pompeii in the Amalfi Coast, the Chamber is coordinating a trip to beautiful Italy, departing October 22nd, 2024. Seven nights in a first-class hotel with a professional tour manager. The Batavia Chamber has more information about that also on our website. We're also excited to announce that we will be launching a new winter restaurant promotion. Restaurant Madness is now being overhauled and will be called Shiver by the River 2024. We are launching a free... It is a free mobile exclusive digital pass that lets locals and visitors check in at our Batavia restaurants, bars, and cafes, unlocking discounts and exclusive menus to score fantastic prizes and explore the best of Batavia. This program will run from February 15th through March 14th, 2024, and we're signing up businesses beginning January 15th. Check the Chamber's website for upcoming events. Tomorrow is our Chamber Not-for-Profit Forum at 8:00 a.m. Thursday is our webinar regarding the new Smoke-Free Illinois Act provision. That's Thursday, January 4th at 11:30. We have a ribbon cutting at the Chamber office for Ray of Sunshine Music. That will be Monday, January 8th at 1:00 p.m. Come join us and welcome them to our community. We have our networking with WorkNet Batavia at 143 First Street on January 8th, Monday at 5:30. Our Coffee and Commerce at Search Something Studio will be 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, January 10th. We have a Lunch and Learn series coming, starting in January, by Michael Schultz. It is covering the topic of unlocking the power of ethical persuasion. That will be held at Pal Joey's Thursday, January 11th at 11:30. We have our networking on our third Wednesday of the month, January 17th, at 4:30. It will be held at Imagine Batavia, the Theater on Randall. And then finally, on February 2nd, we will have our Out to Lunch with the Chamber staff. So mark your calendar and come join us at noon on Friday, February 2nd. Before I introduce my guest, does anybody have any questions before I move on? Great, great, great. I would like now to introduce Amanda Mestretta. She's the Executive Director of SciTech. Previously, SciTech was in Aurora, but now is home-based in Batavia and has gone mobile. SciTech's Hands-on K-5 Education Center is headed up by Amanda. We are lucky to have her in town. Let me turn it over to you, Amanda.
Thank you. Thank you so much. As Margaret mentioned, I am Amanda Mestretta. I'm the newly appointed Executive Director at SciTech. I grew up here in Batavia. I remember going to SciTech as a child. Many of you probably remember the Hands-on Museum downtown Batavia, but you may not know that it started in the late 80s. Ernest Malamed, he went to California and saw the Exploratorium. At the time, like, science and technology was really scary, and so the Exploratorium was a place where families could go and get hands-on science experiments, and he brought that back to Illinois. It started in living rooms and basements. It eventually grew to a small... Some small exhibits in Benedictine College and then in downtown Aurora. Unfortunately, during COVID, the museum did close, but thankfully, we had a really passionate board who didn't want to let the spirit of SciTech go away forever and keep the mission alive. So they moved stuff to a smaller office and started to do programs in the area. Over the last seven months, we've really looked at what SciTech could be and what our new vision is for SciTech. So we, after some meetings with stakeholders and looking at some surveys, we noticed that the families really wanted quality STEM education and a solution for the transportation barrier. So we decided to go back to our roots of those living room Hands-on meetings and bring the programs to the students and children where they are already at. So libraries, park districts, community centers. We even had some breweries and coffee shops reach out to us about having programs. And we also are partnering with Friends of the Fox River as our programming for this year is Eco Explorers of the Fox River Valley. So they will be partnering with us on some curriculum and presenting their water quality program at some of our sessions. We're going to be doing one-hour STEM shops as well as summer camps. Our first big kickoff event that we're participating in is the Batavia Public Library Science Fair. It's on January 27th from 11:00 to 2:00. It's going to be an open-house-style program with the opportunity for you to visit a lot of different tables with different local organizations doing science, hands-on science experiments. We also have events at Geneva Public Library, Batavia Park District, and we're having a summer camp at Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy. You can find all this on our website, our brand-new website, gositech.org, or you can give us a call at 630-859-3434, or find us on social media at SciTech Fox Valley. And I just wanted to say, to wrap things up, thank you so much to Batavia. We just moved our office this summer to McKee Street. We're in the old Dairy Building. We are not a public-facing space. Unfortunately, it's just an office, but Batavia has been so welcoming. Everybody we've talked to in Batavia has welcomed us with open arms, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Can you give us an address on McKee Street?
Yeah, it's 336 McKee Street.
I think that's the old Dairy Building.
Yeah, it's the old Batavia Dairy.
Right. Okay.
Website?
Website is gositech.org.
You got a phone number people can call you on?
Yep.
And your hours are...
We are... We don't have open hours at the office. We just have our programming around the area. So if you go to our website, though, there's a tab that says Go STEM Go, and it has all of the events for ourselves and then other STEM events in the area you can find.
Well, we thank you for coming down, and we wish you many years of success and growth in the community of Batavia. I mean, I know you're serving a wider area, but we're happy to call ourselves your headquarters, and we look for good things to come because the minds you instill and broaden are going to be minds in the future that will probably make this a better world for everyone to live in.
Definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to item 13. Laura, are you handling this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Mayor. There are just a couple of things that I wanted to share with you under the Administrator's Report. One is that we are having a special committee of the whole meeting tomorrow night, and that is to finalize our five-year strategic plan. And it is the culmination of a lot of work on the part of many. It started off with our community survey and incorporating the ideas that the community shared with us as to what they see as priorities, and then sessions with the city council as well to identify what objectives and vision that all of you have for the future of this city. And then we held individual focus groups around those objectives to identify items that would move us toward accomplishing those objectives. And now we have everything put together in a draft plan. And that draft plan can be found on the agenda for tomorrow night's Committee of the Whole Meeting. We appreciate any members of the public that would like to join in that discussion and give us feedback about that, but we're hoping that we might be able to progress to the next steps of adopting the plan. And once the plan has been adopted, then action plans and budgets will be developed for all of those things that will require additional approval by city council. I also want to share some exciting and congratulatory news after... At the end of the day today, Jeremy Barkai, our Water Superintendent, received news that the American Public Works Association's Fox Valley branch has awarded the city of Batavia a Public Works Project of the Year. And this is for the City of Batavia Water Treatment Modification, and it is the project of the year in the category for the environment, under $5 million. So very proud of that accomplishment. I want to congratulate Jeremy Barkai and his whole team for their efforts in that, but also our partner EEI. And Emily came here on a monthly basis to share all of the progress that was being made, as well as Steve Dennison, and they have been great partners on that project and many other water projects that the city has worked on. So want to also thank them. And that's all I have in my Administrator's Report unless anybody has any questions.
Well, one thing, we kind of jumped the agenda here.
I'm sorry.
Before you were to talk, we were supposed to handle Resolution 2024-0003R, which is the Webster Street situation. You want... I'm going to call... Can you explain that, and then they can ask questions and vote on it?
Sure. So Webster Street is a property that the city is looking at as a potential alternative for the location for the food pantry. As many know or remembered, we had received a $3 million grant from Housing and Urban Development's Economic Development. It was part of when we were represented by Lauren Underwood in Congress. There are community funding projects that the congresspeople are able to identify for their home communities, and the city of Batavia received a $3 million grant to relocate our food pantry, which was being displaced by the next phase of the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. And so it has been very... We've been looking at different locations, but one of the things that HUD requires is an environmental review of any property that the city might purchase. So we want to begin that process, and GZA is a consultant who we have utilized in the past. They do fantastic work for us. And so this is a... To approve a contract with them to perform that environmental assessment that HUD will require.
So does anybody in the council have any questions about this? Somebody care to make a motion then to approve Resolution 2004-003?
I'll move.
Motion by Malay, second by Lehman. Or is it that... Did I get that? Did I get that right? Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Newer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Okay, quickly, are we moving item 15, other business? Do we have any other business? All right, moving to 16, the mayor's report. Very quickly, I just want to share with you, I got visited a few days back by the folks that in 1989, I guess, came to Batavia and said they wanted to build a Jewel store. And then they, within a few months after that, they said they were going to bring a Target store in. And I think they also may have had their hand in the further development of Randall Road and Long out there. But anyway, they're back here telling me they're very interested in what's happening around Batavia, and they're nosing around about maybe doing some other types of commercial business activities. Now, I don't know any more about it than that, but they are very interested in looking at us. So I say, well, why are you very interested? And they said, well, the Batavia growth numbers are pretty significant. You know, with the last three years, we built about 500 new residents. And if you include the landings and everything else. And you've got six senior living communities in town now, which is a population that probably is between 1,600 and 2,000 people. And you've got all this new stuff being built. The Batavia Commons out on Kirk Road, which is 242 units. And then we've just gotten application from Pulte, who wants to develop the Furnace Electric slash Wirec property out on McKee Street at Van Ortrick. And that could be another 160, 70 houses out there. So they're saying, you know, these are nice houses and people that are moving in probably got pretty good salaries. And everybody is a big supporter of, you know, doing stuff. And we look at what's happened in the downtown and how it's come kind of firing back with new ideas and renovations and remodeling that we've got some investment opportunities and we're going to explore them. So one thing, when they left, they were going to go down and talk to the folks at Mooseheart, for one thing, and see what could be talked about down there. And that may or may not develop into anything, but they're. I just wanted to share with the Council that we've got, you know, serious people who have performed very, you know, what would Batavia be today if we didn't have that Jewel out there and Randall Road and the Target next to it? I mean, those were, those were classic rivals in this town that really brought our sales tax up and helped our tax base and created a lot of jobs and whatever. So maybe we're going to be in some more for that. I've had a lot of people ask me questions in the last few, and I think some stuff was spread on the internet that wasn't true, about what is this fence doing out in front of the Jewel in the parking lot? And I just want everybody to understand that there is a clear purpose for that. That's a restaurant. Now currently, you can find one in Naperville at Route 59 and 95th Street, if you want to go over and try it. It's called Dave's Hot Chicken. And Dave's Hot Chicken is, I went over and tried it a few months back when they first came in here to talk to us. And I was very impressed with it. Basically, it's a chicken dinner, four pieces, fries and coleslaw. But the chicken is different than the other chicken you buy anyplace else because they interject into each piece of chicken the sauce that you'd like to have. Many people say, I want the barbecue sauce, or I want the sweet sauce, or the beef sauce or whatever. They'll give you all these sauces, and then when you bite into this chicken, you've got this sauce already in your mouth because you didn't have to put it on. It's a very novel idea. And the food, in my opinion, was, it was very good. So if you want to go see what we're getting, it's over 59 and 95th Street in Naperville. But that's what's happening there. And I've had people tell me all kinds of ideas that what somebody told them was coming in there, and it's Dave's Hot Chicken is what's coming in there. So I just wanted you to kind of clear the air on that one and have the right answer if anybody asked you. Any questions from anybody tonight? If not, ultimately, Malay, you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Ah, so move.
Motion and second. Kirk, take a voice call.
All in favor? Thank you.